Rick. Today's March first.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Okay, I'm thirty one. Craig Borba.
Present.
Juanita Garner is out. Al Jones.
Here.
Ed McBride.
Present.
David Norga.
Here.
Welcome to our first in-person meeting in three years.
We made it. Okay, Roman numeral two, acceptance of the agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Move acceptance.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, roll call, please. Oh, no, we don't have to have a roll call. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
No. I see what you're saying, because we're here in person.
We're all here in person. No, this is gonna be really.
They're gonna be good.
Okay, a public comments. I received two on the screen. Do either one of them want to speak at this time, or do you want to wait for the foundation? Okay, all right, thank you.
Usually just have an observer. If you want to speak, just hit the raised hand.
You'll you'll monitor that, Jeanie?
Yeah.
Okay.
You usually don't.
Okay, item number Roman numeral four is a consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Administrative reports, five A is Friends of the Palm Springs Public Library. Julie, will you speak to that?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
The Friends of Palm Springs Library had a modernism event home tour last Friday, left though they had no rain. And they sold over a hundred tickets, also some books and merchandise. So that was a good fundraiser for them to have, and they do that annually. Um, they also have a book sale coming up in March. On March twenty fourth, which is a Friday, it's members only day. So if you're a member of the Friends, you can come to get first pick of the books. On Saturday, it's open to the public on Saturday, March twenty fifth. And on Sunday, March twenty sixth, it is bag day. So you have a bag, you fill it up with as many bits as possible and pay one low price. So if you aren't a member already, please go to the Friends of the Life, Friends of Palm Springs Library dot org and join and come out to the book sale. That is at the free building across the parking lot from the main library. And then their annual meeting is scheduled in April and info is to come. So again, if you aren't a member, join so that you can come to the annual meeting. We always have great speakers and fun things to share. So that is it for the Friends. Any questions?
A book sale starts at what time?
Um, I believe it's ten AM.
Julie, could you please repeat the time and date of the annual meeting?
Um, they, I don't have that yet. It's going to be in April, um, and they will announce it with their guest speaker. So I haven't announced it yet, but I do know it's gonna be in April.
And the March meeting is when?
Uh, the March book sale?
The March meeting.
Fourteenth. Oh, for the Friends board?
Yes.
Yes.
And two.
And I will, I'll look at that time and verify that.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions for Julie? We're hearing none. We'll go to a Roman numeral five B, Foundation, David?
Yep, just real quick, um, we are continuing to recruit new board members as you guys saw after our, after our MOU meeting that there was a ton of them. We are participating in the One PS Family Picnic. We're participating in the library's Family Fun Day. And we have our fundraising event coming up on Sunday, April first called Brunch on the Page. We're featuring two local offers, authors that will speak about their upcoming books. It's at a private home in, Palm Springs. And, um, tickets are available for, I think they're a hundred and twenty-five dollars if you'd like to join us. And that's it for my report.
Is that information also on your webpage?
It is not on our webpage, but Julie has it.
Okay, thank you.
They're getting it on their webpage very shortly.
Okay. All right, any questions for David at this time? Okay, you're none, a library staff, Jeanie?
Okay, I have, um, well, let's see, two things to report. So we had a really great outcome at city council on February twenty first. They approved unanimously the RF queue process. And so our procurement department's going to be working on that this week and next week to get that out and get it issued. So very happy. All great. Uh, thank you to everyone who gave public comment and wrote letters. It was really a nice show of support. And I really do believe it made a difference. So that was, um, one great thing. And the next great thing is that the Friends of the Library in Palm Springs Speaks is bringing Al Franken to Palm Springs. And he's going to be a host on The Daily Show the week of March twentieth, and then this is the next week. So tickets are available, PalmSpringsSpeaks.org, or through Eventbrite, uh, you can search for Al Franken. And, uh, they're going quickly. So get your tickets and Julie has something to add.
Oh, yes, sorry. I looked up the times of the book sale and every day it's nine AM to one PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Al Franken.
What was the date of that?
This is Friday, uh, March thirty first. Sorry, I didn't even think I said that.
The day I'm on a plane to know it. And the location is going to be?
It's at Palm Springs High School at the Richard Center for the Arts.
Okay, so many seats are there.
Big auditorium, but we're about half out. So, um, we're, we're doing great on ticket sales. So I'm very happy. And hundred percent of the proceeds benefits Friends of the Palm Springs Library. So which benefits us?
Perfect.
Yeah, so it's a good fundraiser, good, good, good program for us. And, uh, we hope to be announcing another author coming up soon. For May. So fingers crossed on that one. And then we'll be working on season five.
Any questions for Jeanie?
Um, I have one about the series overall. Ideally, what would be the number of events in the series if, if the year were a typical year?
We used to do three or four events, but then we would always have add-ons. So it would.
About three to five.
Three to five, yeah.
Three to five.
Yeah.
Okay.
We like to do the programs January, February, March, when high season is here and all the activity visitors are in town. So, uh, and then we typically do something in the fall. So, um, yeah, we just, we, we thought we'll start with just one this season, roll it out, get going again. Check, check, take the temperature of the community, see if people want to come back out. And so, so far, so good. And they're very excited.
That's great.
Any other questions? Okay, Roman numeral six, Pressures Report.
Right, trustee jumps. If you looked on page one, Julie and I actually checked it back. There was really nothing.
Jeanie.
Pardon me, Jeanie, I know that. I was on a phone call earlier with Julie, sorry, Jeanie, and I know that Regina is what threw me. It's what's in my mind now. Anyway, on page one, you'll find kind of the, uh, the standard kind of reporting. There's nothing unusual, nothing out of black or unusual. So kind of boring report.
Have we had any expenses at all?
No.
One question on page twelve.
Twelve with a pack of?
Twelve, uh, on the financial.
No.
Shouldn't that mirror what we passed at the last meeting?
No, that'll be on your next fiscal year. So that'll start in July.
July, okay.
Yeah, we're working on all of that process right now with the city.
Great. All right, thank you. Any other questions for, Al at this time? Not, okay, let's go to Roman numeral seven, discussions and actions. Seven A is a memorandum of understanding, uh, with the Palm Springs Library Foundation. Uh, hopefully everyone's had a chance to review it. For purposes of discussion, can I have a motion? So moved. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Um, it's up for discussion. It's before you? Any comments, Ed?
I had. Ed always has.
You knew I had one.
Um, two questions, right? So my first question, um, my apologies for not, uh, being able to make the meeting when you guys met with the city attorney. But I, the last of this I saw was a marked up copy that I guess you guys went through. So do you feel like everything that was on there was resolved? Is there any issues that are of concern of you after that meeting with the city attorney?
I think we covered every item that was on our list. Uh, I'm assuming that on page nineteen, item B might be up for further discussion. And the other one was, that was it. Jeanie, was there anything else?
On item B, the city attorneys felt that it was just simpler to roll it into the document itself rather than have a, an addendum or exhibit. So the, the donation chart was just rolled into the text and, um, some of the questions that had come up from the foundation and others, the city attorney want, um, there were a few little tweaks about, uh, wanting to make sure that the, the city council was, was in the driver's seat essentially on some of the items like use of logos and use of, the rights to do certain things. So, um, the foundation, you, you all can, um, I think that they might want to chime in too, but, uh, ask or ask some questions, but there were some, some concerns about control as far as the city's viewpoint. So it's not that, yeah, it was just some simple language that was, was tweaked around.
So I think there's some items on here such as this item B that we can change. It's not in cement. We could come back and amend this if we decide to do that.
Yeah, the document doesn't have to die, you know, be forever and ever. It could always get a, you know, you can always say, oh, let's revise this, or it's not working, or we forgot something, or.
Is this similar to other organizations in terms of the ranges and the years?
Uh, was it similar to with the theater?
Well, what they did was, um, they did some research of other library foundations and, and naming rights and, and kind of just did some averages. Oh, the city attorneys, thank you.
So why, why do you think this might, is, is it, how far different is it from what the foundation had proposed?
Uh, they didn't propose any changes on the, yeah, it's, uh, but I'm thinking that we're, we're not, definitely not locking ourselves into the future here. It can always be amended.
But everything else you think has been represented?
I think we tackled what we had sorted out. Right. We made some renewals of certain lines that were repetitive.
Oh, yeah, definitely. So do you want to ask the foundation?
I just want to see if the trustees have any more questions or concerns.
I, I appreciate the work done since the last meeting on this. I, I haven't looked at it as carefully as I might, but it seems that we covered everything we talked about last month.
Okay, hearing nothing more from the trustees at this time, uh, David? Or Bill, do you have any comments? If you had an opportunity to look at the document?
We have, and, um, we do have a couple of, of things we'd like to talk about. There are a couple of like format errors. I don't know if you guys noticed that, but that's neither here nor there. But, but the first thing I, I'd just like to bring up is in, um, one C, little I, which is on the second page.
Finances?
Yep. It says construction operation and then ongoing maintenance in the second line there. And then if you go down to DI, it says that the city is responsible for the maintenance and repair, blah, blah, blah. And then, um, um, oh crap, it's in there, it's in there again, the ongoing maintenance. I would just like to, to have that language removed. The, the, the foundation will not be responsible for any ongoing maintenance of the library. It's, it's in, um, on page six.
See, I'm reading that differently, David.
Okay.
I'm, okay. That any funds that you come up with can be used for those type of things. It's not like you have to maintain it. It's not your responsibility to maintain it. But that's the direction that your funds would go to.
I'm, I'm not sure what, which part.
I'm not clear. Ed, I mean, Craig, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, we look at one C one.
One C one or one CI.
And shall be responsible for repairing any, blah, blah, blah.
So it just.
Did talk about that, I just can't remember.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, you're not responsible for the ongoing maintenance, but you're, the funds that you generate would be used for that purpose and for purposes, other purposes of the library.
Oh, can I comment on, on once, on page two, on one CI at the beginning where it talks about finances? That's just saying that any of the funds that you raised can be used for these things. Fund construction, operation, ongoing maintenance, and improvement of the Palm Springs Public Library system, right? So that's the money that you raise can go for those purposes.
Has to go for it.
So that, that's just like the overall umbrella of all of, any money that you give us can be used for these, these, any of these things. So any of those things. And then separately, I think you're asking on page six about maintenance of like plaques and bricks and things. So where's that? On page six?
On F.
F, okay.
Kind of the middle.
So you're responsible for repairing any damage, any signage, plaques or nameplates. Yes, so if you all install or buy us a nameplate or a plaque or something and it breaks, we would come back to you and say, can you, if you want to replace this, can you buy a new one?
Okay, okay. Let, let's forget about number six, because you're right, you're right. But then they, they're conflicting with, with each other. And I don't believe that the foundation exists to provide funds to maintain that building unless I'm wrong. But you know, if, if the air conditioner breaks or the roof leaks, isn't that the responsibility of the city?
Yes, and that's why it's covered in the next part down in D.
Right. So why would it be in, in CI? And I don't, I, you know, we don't need to go back and forth. I just, I'm just asking.
CI is how your funds can and should be used for.
Aren't you correct?
Not, not you, but any funds you generate.
It's not saying you have to do maintenance. It's saying that if you decided to pay for that, you could.
Well, but the structures, no, it says MOU shall, not will, but shall. So it's.
Yes, any funds provided to the city under this MOU.
Shall be used solely to fund the construction.
To me, that reads that it's the city, the city's got the money. They can do whatever they want to, but they're right.
No, I think it's just giving the, it's just saying any, any of these, it could apply to any of these things for the library system. Like you all, the trustees paid for, you, you paid for stuff that happened to be.
We decided to do that.
Yeah, you decided. You don't, it's not obligated, but you decided to. So they, in this situation, I think it's saying you could decide.
But we couldn't decide to pay for, uh, the paving of Sunrise Road.
No, um, the Friends paid for the maintenance of the coin pond. So they, they provide maintenance and ongoing maintenance of something at the library.
But I think the important, the important thing I'm hearing there is that the trustees and the Friends voted and decided to spend their money to, for the maintenance of these projects. So I think David, the same thing would apply to the foundation, that if, we, if Jeanie or the city came and said, we'd like for you to provide the maintenance of this wall of plaques, I'm using your example. The foundation board could agree that that's what their money could be used for, or they could say, we don't think we want to use that money for that. I mean, it's not like that, that they have to pay for it. They would be able to vote and decide if they want to.
I happen to think maybe this is, um, a leftover paragraph from the Plaza MOU and maybe they are responsible for. Maybe we could, maybe we can, maybe that could be changed, because maybe that is just a carryover from the Plaza MOU. And it should be worded differently.
Uh, you know what? I, I can't believe I'm reading this the only way the attorneys are and not the way everybody else is. This is any funds they generate are restricted to these areas.
I agree with you.
I agree. So and, and we need to have that protection for those funds, David. So that they're not being used in other arenas.
I understand. But I understand that, Craig, but, but I don't think that, and Bill, maybe you can chime in, but I, I just don't think that the foundation exists to provide funds for maintaining the building.
I will see that.
Yeah. And, and, and I, and I think it makes our job a little bit easier with potential donors during the renovation capital raising campaign. If that word ongoing maintenance, uh, or those two words were struck there, we, we have no problems. You know, construction operation, improvement of the library system, all of those kinds of things. But we do think that the, the, the maintenance of, of the facility is, is also a city responsibility.
By definition, if you guys go out and raise money for a endowment, that is maintenance. You're main, you're helping us maintain something long-term in a program. So I think you need to think about how you want this to be said. Are you objecting to the maintenance of a physical building or an object or a wall or, or what, what are you saying in terms of you don't want to give money to maintain something? I think that, uh, we need to clarify what that means by ongoing maintenance. That's a very large catch-all in my mind. You know, ongoing maintenance could be, yeah, like Jeanie said, we want you guys to replace a plaque you put up on the wall, because it's falling off and is broken. I don't think we're asking you to buy an air conditioning system for the building, you know, so I think it's the maintenance of anything you funded, but we need to clarify it.
What if we fund up an auditorium? You know, is, is it going to be the foundation's responsibility to maintain that?
No, I think the simple solution honestly here is change the word shall to may and delete the word solely. And just so you may, these are types of things you may do, but you're not restricted to it. And there are other things you can do. And then that takes care of the issue.
I, I'm not opposed to your suggestion, Al. I think that's a good one. I'd just like to go back a step and echo what Bill was saying a moment ago about the fundraising aspect. Um, in, in, in my own experience, it's always tougher to raise money for what people consider routine maintenance than it is for something new and shiny and flashy. And I, I don't know if this will ever, you know, see eyes beyond those of us who are immediately involved. But to the extent it might be referred to by potential significant donors, that could be a possible turnoff. I, I do see that point, though.
Thank you.
So, uh, I don't know who to talk to here.
We're at a point, I think maybe Craig has a point, though, that this is, this is saying any funds that you raise are for the library, not for the police department, the fire department, any other departments within the city. So maybe this paragraph is saying the funds that you raise are for the library. And then they listed some examples, but, um.
But, but they listed it in such way by the use of the word shall, that's what changes the meaning of that whole sentence.
But when you put, you put shall in the third person, it becomes mandatory.
If you put may in there, then they can use the money for anything they want.
Right.
And can, can I say something? And what if, what if we just put in that sentence, any funds provided to the city under this MOU shall be used solely to fund the Palm Springs Public Library system? I mean, you know, because we, that way it's got to go to the library. I mean, the city, you know, I don't know.
But Jeanie still could use it for maintenance. I mean, you're really.
Yeah, you're right. I can't, I, I contradict myself, but because I, I, I guess I'm saying, I, I understand what Craig is saying. We want to make sure the money goes to the library.
Yeah.
But we also don't want to maintain the building.
Yeah, I, I, again, I go back to the suggestion of change shall, demand, delete the word solely. And I, I think that resolves the whole issue. It says you can do it, don't have to do it.
But then it suggests.
I think that that's why we have attorneys. I think that this hasn't been submitted to the foundation, correct, right?
Correct.
Right. I think that you guys should identify either alternative language to this, or we ask the city attorney to come up. Listen to your objection of what can they come up with.
Okay, okay. Let's agree on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so it goes back.
No, it goes to them next, but them come up with a suggestion.
Yeah, we're not going to go with your suggestion unless the attorney that represents the city is going to approve it.
Exactly.
Okay, well, let's, let's get our attorney to look at it, and then we'll give it back to you.
So you didn't like the, the one CI, but then is, was there another section or anything else that you had concerns about?
Um, Bill, yeah, go ahead.
There was one format issue that's just, um, a minor detail. Um, in one CI, I, uh, it refers to, uh, hang on a second, one CI refers to, um, the two C, uh, I've, I B or four, and there is no four there. I, I don't believe.
Right, you're right.
So then that's just a nit, um, sorry about that. Um.
Yeah, we scratched it for.
Yeah. So what does it refer to then?
Three. I believe it refers to three. It just got misnumbered. And thank you for, um, I should have said it right at the outset. I appreciate all of the, the listening that was done and, and the, um, modifications that were done to this document based on our previous meetings. It's, it, it was great to go through it.
Jeanie, you'll make that correction.
I'm making the note, yes.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, on two B, I, 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 these are the obligations of the, of the foundation. And I see where the, the city put in, uh, if we wanted to have the, um, use of our logo and likeness. We just wanted to know. And so they put in something for, uh, notification to the president of the foundation. And then, um, a corollary to that would be, we would need to, uh, let the city know how we wanted to use, um, the, the city logo and the library logo and those kinds of things. So we, we see that. In, uh, that was in A, I'm sorry, that was in A.
Yeah.
Down on, uh, uh, two B, I, 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 there is a, um, a series of reporting requirements, which, um, you know, we're going to be doing internally, um, pretty much on our own. So sharing those with you, I think would be a good thing. The last sentence, the foundation shall provide any financial records requested by the city within thirty days following such request. Do we have any idea what the city would, you know, what's behind that? What's the intent of that, uh, particular request?
I'm not aware.
Okay.
Have they ever asked for the Friends?
The Friends don't have an MOU.
No, but I mean, they haven't asked for the Friends in the past, as for their budgeting.
No.
Material.
Only, only for grant requests, they ask for, I mean, organizations ask for budgets and financial records.
Again, ask for, ask the city attorney what they mean by that.
Yeah.
I, I, we, you know, obviously, we're going to be transparent and, um, we're going to do everything to, uh, make sure everybody knows how things are going. And, and those kinds of things. We are just curious to know, um, what kinds of things that would be. And so we would be.
What's included?
Well, what, what they might ask for. So we might be, you know, if we have a system that we put into place, you know, what do we need to, to provide, you know, um, it's just for a lot, a lot of it's for planning purposes, really.
Right, got it. Jeanie, you got it?
Yeah, I, I, my, my suspicion is, is, is if they thought there was some malfeasance or misuse of funds, they're going to ask for the records.
Right.
That's, that's typically where that kind of a phrase, what it refers to.
Would come to, you know.
Well, there's, there's nothing to say that someone, a member of the public could ask the city where this money came from and ask questions as well as Freedom of Information Act.
That could.
You know, so I think that, but I think it's only fair to say some examples of, so that you can track the information that potentially they might ask, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Is this for my information? Are your funds audited? As a nonprofit? Are you being audited? Would you have, you won't have a yearly audit?
Who would audit us? Oh, we'd audit ourselves?
Yes.
Uh, we have not so far.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll check into that for you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, um, we talked about three B with the chart, the chart, uh, naming, uh, coming into the document. We don't have any problems with that. It's just, um, what is, how does the first five thousand work? The naming, the naming rights term of, uh, zero years, what?
Yeah.
You get ten minutes.
What is that? I was I was wondering myself.
Was it was taken out altogether? Like, there wasn't going to be anything. I said, oh, we need something. We need something in here for
But this was something Jenny was going to come out of your department.
Yeah, so this would be something that I just, I would oversee any of the smaller gifts. And then we wouldn't really put a time limit on those. But we could, if you really want, we could put it back. It was originally listed as a year.
You know what? I'm just wondering whether we should just put a director of the library.
Or TBD.
Well, I think we still need to have something in here that goes an amount because the my argument about that was if someone gave a $4,000 gift and there was nothing listed, it was a forever gift.
So you want to go back to the one year?
We could put a one year on that.
One year.
Five thousand dollars or less for one year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Less than five.
I'd like to say something about that, too. I mean, we we should this. I I do believe that this portion of this document should be fluid because we were talking earlier, Bill and I, that theoretically someone could give a $4,000 gift of something that could be more or less permanent, like a door, you know, or something special that may end up lasting more than a year. So it it may have to be a little more fluid than that.
Well, and the year is just the the minimum. It's not that that after a year we run around and rip off tags. We just, it it gives us an out if something's starting to look worn or get.
So so let's add that to the, let's add that to that where it says naming rights term. Let's put minimum.
That's I find confusing, though. I really do. I I say a minimum of one year, minimum of five years. Does that mean? So I give a $5,000, $5,000 one dollar gift. It could be there forever.
Could be.
It could.
I I just.
We've got lots of the lots of plaques on the on the hall from long, long ago.
Yeah, but is that just from inattention, not yours, but is it from inattention or or is it from deliberate? You know, it just seems to me others are going to say, you know, five years, and at the end of five years, if you want to renew it, I want another $5,000 one dollar. Or whichever whichever level you want. This doesn't go on in perpetuity.
Right.
Just simply because we're not going to go around and take down plaques. We shouldn't be, actually, I think, frankly.
Well, some of them are uh, would be book plaques. And I don't know if we have the manpower.
That would be a little different.
And that is one of the trickier donations. If someone gives us a donation for a book and we put a book plate in the book and the book gets torn up in less than a year, that we're not going to go and replace the book plate and replace the book, but.
So are you telling me that I can designate how I want my, where my naming right is? So if I don't want a book, I want the bathroom door.
Depends on what's available. But yeah, the foundation is going to, they're going to be the ones who are going to help us work on the list.
Okay, but I I think the idea of putting minimum, there is a good suggestion.
I think it's implied, is it implied? Makes it sound like that's that's the end.
See, I would argue would be maximum, not minimum. Subject to renewal.
If somebody gave us a million and we maximum twenty, now I think it'd have to be minimum twenty twenty years.
If they gave a million?
If they gave, you know, thirty million to name the building, it'd be a minimum of twenty years and not, you wouldn't say a max maximum because
I wouldn't think, no. A minimum, a hundred thousand wouldn't be enough for naming rights for a building.
Anything over a hundred thousand would be a twenty year term, so. If they gave thirty million and it's to protect the donor's name and their gift.
Right.
To make sure that it's on the building.
No, I I trust me, I do understand. When I gave the 250,000 to Desert Age Project, I made it very clear that this had to continue after I die for a certain number of years. Absolutely. I know Peggy Craven, she did the same thing with COD about two years before she died. So Donna Peggy Craven Student Center, she went after Joe Heneman and said, and her attorney, to make sure that it stayed on for a certain amount of time because they were squirrely about it. So I mean, it it can cause some issues.
So you think the word minimum should be on there?
Not really. I think maximum. Subject to renewal. You're trying to raise funds. I mean, this, the whole point is raising funds. So if I'm going to give you a hundred thousand, you know, for or not, go to a smaller year. If I'm going to give you something that allows me five years, why shouldn't I be, why should I expect to go beyond five years without a further contribution is really the question. It's a fundraising tool. I don't want to belabor this. I mean, I'm just one voice, but I see this as fundraising and should not be in perpetuity.
Well, but I think this is guidelines to the foundation. The foundation could find that donor who's going to give us $20 million. And in there, as you know, you've done this yourself, in the agreement that they that donor establishes with the foundation, they may stipulate how long they want the naming rights to be, the city would approve that or say no, right? So that if they brought a $20 million donation that they wanted to be on there for the for the duration of the building life, the city might say sure for twenty million.
And I agree with all that, Ed, but I don't find any of that in writing.
What I mean.
So I'm taking my attorney and I'm going to challenge you. Different, like, I I my point is, I think we just have to be.
Different dollar amounts, it goes to a different person to approve. Right, so genie has the approval rights up to 25,000. I think that's what we stated.
That's what our limits are right now with the city.
And then this.
It's on page six, so that's.
City manager can approve up to hundred thousand and anything above that hundred thousand, city council.
Right, so there there will be donor agreements with the foundation, and then all of that will go to council and then.
Well, you're just telling me the council has to make the deter decision to accept the money for that naming rate. But it doesn't say anything about what happens when you hit the mech this this number of years, whether they're minimum or maximum. I'm I I'm just saying, it's just it moves a kind of an open door. So the city manager has the authority to prove or disapprove. And the up to a hundred thousand, city council after a hundred hundred thousand. But do they in that approval process set the length of the term? Then we should say they set the term. That's all I'm saying. It it just the absence of any language is what worries me.
What what about, what about some phraseology that said exceptions or deviations by mutual agreement agreement? You know, where we could evaluate a donation, a naming rights donation of, you know, some sizable amount on its merits and then make an adjustment if all the parties agreed.
But but Al's concern is he wants these to flip over. We got five thousand for five years. He wants to make sure that's it, and then we're going to put that same item up for another five thousand.
It exactly. I found a place I would suggest, if you look at three D where it says cities prior approval, I don't I'm not sure what that means, but here it says the city shall retain all control over location, size, type, amount of all naming rights opportunities in kind donation prior to issuing any naming rights opportunity, the foundation shall have tendencies written approval of the naming rights, including as applicable, we could insert here the the time of, you know, whatever we refer to the naming rights term, the proposed location. That kind of gives, that kind of adds the the foundation could come to the city and say, we have a $20 million opportunity. They want it for twenty years. And all these things are answered in that donations because they're clearly saying they want that to approve it, right? So I think that that this up, this box to me is guidelines. It's not, it's not the necessarily the what you would go to, because some of them may ask for thirty years. We don't know. But we're saying minimum, I like the minimum.
Let's insert the word term in that paragraph.
Yeah, I I I think that helps, Ed.
Yeah.
Okay, so Julie made a great suggestion, too, on the next page at the top where it talks about the the authorities after each of those I double I triple I up to like the first one, up to $25,000 and set length of term. After each one of those sentences, it's and set length of term.
I think I prefer it in each of those than what you've suggested. And it reads a little bit differently if it's in each one specifically.
I agree. I think it'd go in both places because the, to me, the D is the framework for the request for approval that the foundation would need to submit to the city to be approved. And why not include it in that list of items?
Doesn't have to approve anything up to twenty five down or to twenty five.
Well, I'm the city.
Jenny has that authority. So the city's not involved up to that level.
Is everyone okay with Julie's suggestion? I would say we're going to put it in D and then we're going to also have it in D.
I I wouldn't. Well, you can. I it's gratuitous, I guess. Sure.
And E?
In the D at the bottom.
And where else?
Anything else on that page?
We do have three E and F. Um, three E is fairly new and it's fairly descriptive. Just a question as to why that would have been added. What's?
Forgot to put that in or thought realized that there were some unanswered questions and and added some some information here. You remember that, Craig?
Yeah. Ongoing maintenance is also in that.
Well, I I don't know if this tends to tie our hands or not because well, there's some specifics here. The foundation would give the city the proceeds from a a naming rights opportunity within thirty days of receipt. What what, why would that be any different than other funds? I you know, I I just, I guess I'm just curious to know where this is coming from and what the intent was.
I remember this one. There there was a question that had come up when we had our little subcommittee meeting with the friends and the foundation, and someone said, well, who gets the money when a donor gives money for a naming right? Does it stay with the nonprofit and then they get to use it however they want? And then they just say, okay, then that's named that and we get the 20 million. This says, no, the 20 million reason that as an example is going to go to the city and they put a time limit on it because they didn't want it to be pledged. And oh, well, we'll get to it. Oh, well, we'll that's coming and then it never comes. So they wanted to put a a time limit to make sure that in a timely manner that the the pledge actually does come to the city to be used for that intent.
Well, I have a question, though, that where does the money, who? The money is specified for a certain, can only be spent on the library, to use a generic term. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the city can't use it for anything else. All right, I just want to be sure their answer.
That's what we made sure the attorneys were clear on when we were.
Okay, because I'm dealing with another commission and money that was specifically allocated to do certain things. The city's now told them to use for maintenance. For various projects, which was not what the intent was for the money that was in that budget. And you're fighting it.
This will be restricted.
All right, and I'm very done. I want to be sure it's restricted.
We'll do that now. This is more of a city accountability clause right here. It's the way I read it. The city wants to make sure that if a member of the community's pledged money, the city is going to put it towards that pledge project, is the way this reads.
And there was a, there was a vague question about, well, who really does get to keep that money? And that was, it was a quite, and there was a little bit of a discussion. That's a good word.
I can see.
Yeah. So it we, it was made clear on this.
Okay, so we're going to leave E as is.
Well, are we going to take out the words ongoing maintenance? Sorry to return to that. Maybe I should just retract that.
It's the same issue as earlier. I mean.
Once they solve the one earlier, then it'll apply here.
Right.
Okay.
I'll circle it.
Get that, Jim. Thank you. All right. Bill, anymore?
Well, I, yeah, well, okay, I don't want to whine. But I mean, listen, you know, being tying, I I I don't know, maybe the, maybe this will come out and be much easier than I think it is, but tying a certain expense to a named donation and then wanting to retain some of that because we used it to to raise funds. And then accounting for that for every gift using a naming. I don't know. It just seems a little onerous to 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 me. I don't know what David, how David feels about it, but I mean, we might be able to work this out. I I just I don't know.
Well, let's see how it flows and then we can discuss it and massage it again.
Well, we know, well, for example, in other sections previous, we know all the money we raise has to go to the city. We've talked about that this evening. So and and we know that the naming rights have to be approved prior to accepting the money from the person that's donating it. And so when we get this money, our obligation is to provide the money to the city within thirty days of receipt. So you know, I just, I'm just, this came came at us from left field and I guess we haven't had a chance to digest how how we're going to do this. And whether we set up a separate fund fundraising expense fund as a sort of a catchall. And then, you know, if we got $30 million, if we got a $3 million named donation, you know, how do we direct lead? How do we figure out if there were expenses that need to be taken from that? I don't know. We're we're gonna, that kind of a situation will have to have a agreement with the donor. I'm sure we're going to have a a a donor agreement with the the foundation donor type of an agreement that's going to be in compliance and in accordance with these terms. But.
So the donor would not only make the contribution for the naming right, they have to pay for the cost of whatever they form it takes. Is that correct?
No, I, you know, that's what I'm saying. I I'm not, we haven't had a whole lot of time to digest how we would get get the job done. I mean, if I were the donor, I would say, make sure that this three million, all of it gets over to what I wanted to do. And I don't think we'd say no. Unless.
But if you come back to me and say, I also have to pay the cost of the installation or the that that's going to be a little bit of an irritant to me as a donor.
Yep, yep. So.
What do you think those costs would be? Just ballpark.
He Craig, that's the I don't know. I mean, what's customary in the industry? Is that fifteen percent? Is it twenty percent of what of what not prof not for profit foundations raise and how much they spend to raise that? I think it's somewhere in that ballpark. Ed may know more about that than I than certainly than I do, but.
It's my experience again that once, once a list of fundable projects are submitted to the foundation from the city, with any to those, you would identify things like the cost to install or create or maintain. And I think that would all be part of each. I don't think it's going to be like for everything. But you know, if you're going to, for example, I think the point you may want to go about a meeting room. If to fund a meeting room for twenty years is $150,000, that might just, the city might say it also includes refreshing the furniture every five years, or it might, there might be lists within that project that you would take to a donor and say, your $300,000 is going to do this for this room. So I think that we're probably trying to solve all these issues, but I think every project is going to have some sort of definition of what we need you to fund, if that makes sense.
I would also like to add that in typical grants, ten percent of indirect costs are allocated for administration. So it wouldn't be unheard of to ask for ten percent of of a gift. For administration. So it wouldn't be unheard of to ask for ten percent of of a gift to. To do your administrative back.
I agree with that. Yeah, the foundation would want a piece of it to go to the long-term administration of the whole foundation, right? What what is that percentage? I I don't know what that would be.
Al, when you, when you allocated your, and you donated your money, did, did you work out anything? On on that score in terms of overhead or expenses or anything like that?
No.
No.
But you know they spend it some.
If if somebody's gonna give us a hundred thousand dollars.
Mark's names.
Yeah. To fund a room. What do you think they're expecting? I I I'm a part of a foundation, the Rapp Foundation, and we have a building. And people can have naming rights for different rooms, different conference rooms. They receive a plaque in that room. That plaque may cost fifty to a hundred dollars depending on how big the room is. That's our total expense that we have when we receive a donation.
Do you ask the donor to pay that?
No, we pay. But for thirty thousand dollars for one of our rooms. They get a plaque that cost us fifty dollars. It 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 seems to be workable, not an issue.
But do you offer the detail as to how that money is spent once it goes into the bank account of the foundation?
The money that comes into the building is used for the facility. So that we can, uh, this is a two-story building. We have maybe fifty offices in there. So that the air conditioning is a big deal. And so their money mostly is gonna go towards newer conditioners. And so they know that.
But they're transparent to the donor?
And we're kind of in a unique situation cuz we're trying to maybe build out new items, new. Facilities and then refresh or create new spaces in in our existing building. So, uh, in this case, we're gonna work with the architect designers to find out. Rough costs for each of those spaces and then you can set a price and your price can include a little bit of plaque buying and. Whatever, if you need a little bit of maintenance or operation expenses, ten percent, you just.
Yeah.
We set the naming.
Yeah.
Instead of different.
Sure, you, yes, when we, when we get ready to do our capital campaign, we're going to have the budget for the project. And we will build in our administrative costs and that's totally normal and customary.
Absolutely, yeah, I agree. And I think the only other expectation of a donor are two things, a plaque typically. And secondly, to always have that name attached to that room or whatever it is. So when you put it in your whatever written literature or anything else carries the name, that's really the expectation of a donor.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're, and they're gonna know that it's gonna cost us something to do what we're doing.
Right, right.
You don't have exceptions. I mean, you know, someone, I say. Yeah, the, I remember back to the days when we used to get money from the Gates Foundation, right? Sometimes the Gates Foundation would plug stuff in there that they would expect you to do long term because they're giving you the money, right? That kind of stuff's gonna happen from foundations. We're not talking about just individuals. We're talking about foundations. We're talking about all kinds of different things. So there could be some requirements that you're gonna have to honor to take the money, right? So absolutely, money talks, my friends.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, particularly with both foundations and corporations, they'll want their logo, they'll want, yeah, that sort of thing, a party.
We hope to become quite good at party.
Many too many, okay.
And I have one, one other one that we've chatted about, but we might like to see in the, in the, in the document. And 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 that is, we still do believe that there should be a centralized. Coordinator for naming rights request so that we're not colliding with one another. It's not that, you know, we, we need to have, you know, yes or no, or you can't do that and these guys can do that. It's really, you know, could, could the foundation uh, exist and part of their responsibility is. Fielding uh, opportunities for naming rights in one central repository. So that 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 there's some control over not overselling or selling something si- similar. And then having this approval process to go through. Um, with the city and presenting it in in the best light, so we get the city to say yes in most cases. So if we could put just some language in there that says that the parties agree. That opportunities come to the foundation for centralized record keeping or something to that effect. Uh, so we don't have these problems down the road. I, we would feel more comfortable with that. Did I say that right, David?
Yeah, you did. And in our, in our, in our, in the meeting we had, I think we were kind of all in agreement that there should be one entity that kind of handles it.
I thought I saw that. Got a three eight, and I think you need to expand on that because that paragraph pretty much is saying that you guys are better suited to do this sort of thing. So I think if you had a three A and if it doesn't say it the way, if you're trying to say that nobody like the friends or the trustees. Can get into your area of naming rights opportunities, I think you need to might tighten that paragraph up. But it's all right there saying that you're the best to do that.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Thank you, thanks Ed.
Okay. And the other thing that Ginny and I are working on is a flow chart. Uh, that marks where the donations go from the different areas that it could come into. The money could come in through the foundation, it could come in through the friends, it could come through the library itself. So we'll set these flow charts and we'll make that available to you.
Tomorrow.
Next month. We're gonna shoot for next month. But it'll be based on what what's in this document here, okay?
For future, future agenda items.
Yeah, that gives us two items already cuz we're gonna be looking at this again. Okay, any other comments?
My last one is easy. It's 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 a request. It's in section five insurance. Uh, and we just got our outreach from our our broker today in terms of what kind of insurance the foundation wants. So we've got to get this resolved before June. Uh, anyway, we don't know, we're we're bound by this uh, uh, document to have the coverage and types. As required by the city's risk manager, but we don't know what the city risk manager limits are. You know, what what are the guidelines? We just like to have those so we could do it and be in compliance.
That's, I mean, I was communicating with the city attorney and I, we never got the information, we never got back and forth to each other on the information.
So that won't affect this because this will continue, but we'll get that information to you.
The city attorney is the risk manager, so I found out that.
Ginny, under, under section nine general provisions, the letters are not in order, that's all.
Section nine?
Yeah, the small letters are 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 not in order. It's the new alphabet.
It's a hologram.
Okay, I circled that.
Okay, we've got that fixed. And if you look on the last page, are all the right names there for you? Yeah. And the titles? Yep. Well, for the foundation, I don't know about the city, but yeah, the foundation. Yeah, for the foundation. Okay, any other comments?
Just a, a big thank you again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you all.
All right. So we had a motion in a second, but I think.
Where we can now vote, right?
Uh, we could. The amendment was to approve this as is.
Yeah, there are a couple of substantive.
Yeah, so we may have to withdraw that.
I can, I can change my motion to say that I'd like to move that we accept this document as we've just modified with the changes. Right?
We have it subject to, to those two.
It was Al and David who first in a second.
How you can do that?
Well, I I, or it could be worded in such a, subject to the satisfactory, that whole issue about the ongoing maintenance. Uh, and the other one was on terms of, um, what was the other one? Under what cases could uh, uh, the records be requested?
What's uh, what's to be included?
Right, yes, those are subjective, I mean, actually.
You all tell us what the motion should be cuz it's.
Yeah, the motion is to approve. After the defining the.
Of the MOU.
And defining what's required by the city for the finances.
There were.
Another finance, but defined by the city is is subject to.
When they wanted to request the records.
Yeah.
Which item is that one? Requesting the records, which, what item was that, Bill?
Oh, um.
It's, um.
You mean.
Page eighteen.
Yeah, page eighteen.
Two, B, three.
Okay, so we need to have a clarification of what documents need to be available to the city.
Is it possible to clarify that when that comes back, if the chair agrees that it responds, that it just move forward without another vote?
Uh, that should, that can be your motion.
That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
So the motion now is to, um, to submit the MOU back to the city attorney with. Uh, and authorize the chair to approve any changes.
Correct. So without having to come back to us and slow it down again and just keep it moving.
The way you said it simplifies it for second emotion. Can you say it again, James?
Submit back to the city attorney. So the motion is to submit the MOU to city attorney, uh. Writing this down, uh, for revisions.
So only clarification or one having to do with under what cases can the city request the records?
For clarification.
Verification.
And what's specified. And what's to be included.
Right.
In those documents. Because the. The foundation needs to know what documents to make available to the city.
For financial documents?
Yes.
Right?
And I was just thinking, rather than holding it up for a day.
Cuz I've been.
To give you the authority, you know where all of our feelings are in that with the discussion. It's whether it responds to that or not. I'm comfortable delegating that authority to you.
Yeah, okay.
I am definitely, I, I.
I'll read it again.
Okay.
So, so the motion is just leaving recently, yeah, so submit the MOU to the city attorney for clarification. And ask what is to be included regarding financial records.
In a financial records request.
Um, you wanna spec- say specifically related to paragraph?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. The one on page eighteen. Big Roman numeral two, lowercase b, lowercase double i.
Okay. And then the other one was the, uh. A decision to be made on the ongoing maintenance.
Right.
That appears twice in this document.
So what do you wanna say about that?
So, can we use different verbiage? Or should we need to clarify that more really what they're stating that they're taking, so.
Or delete it, isn't it?
Or delete it.
Um, or just say, um.
That should be a simple.
Clarification as, as noted or commented.
Well, there was a question about ongoing maintenance. Actually, the word should be continuing, but I won't argue that. But it's ongoing maintenance. Um, and that was the question and that was the issue. That's, what is, what is, what does it mean by ongoing?
Clarification regarding ongoing maintenance.
Right, right, right.
And whether it should be struck.
Exactly, yes, right.
Well, just clarification. Cuz then, and then, so submit it to the city attorney for all of these things and then authorize.
Or authorize the chair.
I wrote the chair.
The trustees.
To accept on our behalf.
Right.
And I, as sec- a secondor, I accept that from, as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. I did so well on drafting the new revised language, but thank you.
Ed, any concerns? Oh, you do have a, go ahead.
I I think you need to give yourself a caveat, but if something comes back, then it's opposite of what we've been discussing. You may want to discuss it with the board again.
Of course.
I just think, no, Doug, they can talk, you're, you're either up or down.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, that's not the spirit of what we were discussing.
That was to me self-evident.
That I have the option to bring it back.
Right.
Except on behalf of trustees or bring back.
Right. I mean, that's the alternative. If it doesn't meet it, then he can't make any decision.
Okay, so Abe and Bill, we're attacking two of the items that you brought up. Uh, we're also gonna make the corrections that you brought up that were clerical.
Oh, yeah, we'll fix all that.
Is that gonna meet your needs?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna accept that. Wait, we, we're gonna have to have our lawyer look at it though first before we can totally commit. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Stentions? Okay. All right, now this should be simple, hopefully. Item B, set new meeting date for April.
Yes.
Of twenty twenty-three, we have a conflict with Passover.
Um, I actually, I said on the agenda proposing April sixth, but that's got a conflict. So we, I was at, we checked around April fourth, looks good on our end.
I won't be here, just so that you know, but I could call it. Well, can I still participate? I'll be in Hawaii.
Have an hour.
Okay.
And actually, April fourth, if we do meet, uh, on April fourth, we will be in the city council chambers. So you don't get to sit up on the dais.
Oh, wow, it's worth it just for that.
I'll still be in Hawaii and Maui and on other screen setup so you can see the waves.
Do you think April four, it's a Tuesday?
Okay, so we have a recommendation from administration for the fourth, Tuesday, five thirty. Uh, all in favor?
I, I.
Oh, do you, uh, do we need a motion in a second?
There was one, there was a.
I am, I said administration.
Change the regular day, yes.
Okay, whatever.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, are we good?
Yeah.
And that will be at five thirty. I have no idea what, I don't know whether.
I'll just finish.
I may or may not be in a bathing suit, I make no promise.
And don't get our hopes up. Okay.
I have a board meeting at the, the HOA, so.
Okay.
Five hours or four hours behind or three hours.
Two or two or three.
Uh, item eight, trustees and staff comments.
Never mind, I've got the, um, future item to go flow chart for donations. What was the other item that you, you said we have two items?
Yeah.
So I I guess this may be a question to your report, Judy, but. Should we be ready to support any future? Actions around city council, pushing through the, making sure we've got everything we wanted. I mean, I think we have to forget.
It's gonna take us some time to get.
Remember this, this body asked for that motion to go before city council, they agreed to it, right? So I think our minutes should note that our, our motion was accepted by city council, not just they, we did push that. But I think, is there anything else? Because, you know, we need advocacy, we need to make sure that we don't let them forget. Do you feel there's anything that we need to do either through the foundation, the friends or the trustees? To keep this alive and moving, cuz I'd hate for it to get lost or.
I think we're okay right now. Everybody, um, just watch, uh, this channel for information. But right now, we're gonna do the RFQ process and then the procurement department's.
And what's the timeline for issuing that?
They're, uh, they're working on it this week and maybe next week.
And what would be the, the date that submission be by?
Then I don't know. I don't know what the timeframe is. Maybe it's, uh, it might be two weeks. I don't know what typical RFQ timeline goes. If it's thirty days, I don't.
I'm thinking thirty days.
It might be thirty days, so it's gonna take us some time, but they, they're on it. So I'm very excited. Bill has his hand up.
Yeah, I just a, a point of clarification on, on the, um. Discussion that went on in, in, in the city council. One of the city council members, uh, started to summarize the amount of monies. That has been approved and is available for the project. And that council member mentioned additional money that is coming from Measure J. Do you remember that, Ginny, when you were making your proposal for? Do you remember that, Genie, when you were making your proposal for approval? Well, okay, so specifically, it was something like, um, sixteen million available for, uh, from the grants and another ten million available from Measure J.
Yeah, okay, yes, we got thirteen million with the grant, so six and a half and six and a half matching, so that's thirteen million, and then, yeah, you, they did say something about that, so, um, yes.
And I'm. Okay, so is that the number that you're working with, we're all working with, is thirteen plus, uh, another ten, or?
No, we're not, um, we're not set in stone on any of that, just the thirteen million is set, because that's grant-funded and required. Um, but that's what the architects and designers are gonna find out, they're gonna tell us how much everything costs and give us a grand total. And then, that's when we look to our funders and donors and.
And the city.
And the city, of course, uh, but I am already, I, I'm already asking, asking them to start budgeting money. Uh, because we know it's going to cost more than thirteen million, so.
Our request in the RFQ is greater than the thirteen million.
Yeah, so, um, I, I had been, I had thrown out the number thirty million, because, uh, library projects that I saw, um, library journal every year puts out architectural projects, and they tell the price per square foot, and they're running about a thousand dollars a square foot, and we're a thirty-four thousand square foot building. So we're looking at thirty-four million dollars.
Good, good place to start.
I mean, I think that's really, sadly, it's realistic, um, it's gonna cost as much to build, to renovate as it would to build a new building, so.
Well, that's also still part of the question, right? We haven't answered that question, that if the city gets a bill and it's fifty million dollars to redo the building, they may say, well, how much would it cost to redo the whole, just start a new one, right? Remember, that question was never fully taken off the table.
I don't think that, I don't think we're at a point where we would scrap the building and.
I had to wait till that price tag come back.
We'd have to see what engineers say, maybe, you know, we might have some, some problems, but, um, I don't know.
But no matter what, we're gonna need to raise more funds.
Yeah, so you're right, they did say that, they did talk about some of the Measure J. And so it's all in the works right now, right now is budget season, and we're.
Well, the most measure J ever included was close to twenty million dollars, and all those iterations, and the last time I saw it, you know, it was spread over five years, but there was about twenty million dollars that they had allocated.
Yeah.
For that project when they were discussing it, right?
Yeah, 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 so you, you all, your advocacy can include, you know, lobbying for Measure J. That's realistic and timely.
Thanks, Genie.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions from trustees? Anything from staff?
No.
Okay, so I'll adjourn this meeting, our next meeting, it will be April fourth at five thirty, and that is a Tuesday, not a Thursday.
Tuesday, April fourth. We will be in the city council.
Thank you all for your attendance and input.
Great. Thank you.
It's fun to do it first.
Yes, that's right. We're all much bigger.